Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Record of attendance, absent with regrets. Okay. Okay, declarations of conflict of interest and approval of agenda, any additions or deletions? Okay, we have one in camera Jeff mentioned, okay, moved by Council McLeod. Seconded by deputy, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Okay, so budget review. How big are those? Big? Oh, I thought I said, yeah, budget review, sorry.
Think they want to do the grants?
Doesn't matter to me, we can do both. Okay, let's do the grants first. Any questions? I can't hear you. You said all of us. We give up. No, we didn't. Okay, this one was...
What's your name, Chambodozio, wasn't it? That was, they wanted to take over the building and spend a bunch of money on it and stuff.
That's probably why.
Really? Well, if you guys think that strongly about it, I'll join with you.
But how strongly did, I don't have that in front of me.
My concern was that it was a whole new thing and once you get it started, then they're coming every year for, you know what I'm saying? Okay. But a thousand dollars on a $35,000 request?
No, I know. So...
I, I, I think I'd like to be, do the same as you guys, you're smarter on that one.
Linda, can you make that change?
And then that's it.
Put a thousand in there, mhm. Anybody else, anything that you want to change or you got a concern with? I don't know if this works. Yep, Jeff?
So, your worship, there is, there is an amount there. You did have a request from the memorial club. And my understanding, if I understand the, the news correctly, is that they're not going to be continuing. So, the question is whether or not a grant is warranted.
Do you want to explain that, Sandy?
From my understanding, they still wanted money to be able to fix the memorial that they have there. And they need, I believe, a new flagpole. So, they still need it money for that.
Okay. I misunderstood, I didn't...
Yes.
No, no, I missed it.
So... Yeah, there's, there's still a committee and they do still have some work to do. And I think part of what they said on top of what Sandy has said is they got to wrap things up. They're going to need some money to just kind of pull things together. So, does anybody want to make a change there? If you want to make a change? Did you, you must have handed out all your...
I did.
So, I can, so where are they here? Okay, now, let's see what I did. I put them in anyway. Because, but I, when I did it, I allowed for that. I understood they wanted to have a bit of money.
Yeah.
So, they wiped things up, so I, I'll stay with what I did there.
Yeah. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, so the other one is the Relay for Life. We were going to investigate using our credit and asking our neighbors to, to consider sharing the cost. We can't use our credit for that in, in good conscience because of the situation where, you know, with the deal we made, that would kind of be a little out of bounds. So, if we want to give something to the Relay for Life, you need to consider that as a, as a cash grant.
On top of what we've done, you mean?
Right.
Okay, so, wow. So, the Relay for Life was asking for 4,500?
Yes.
Okay.
So...
Oh, okay, so we still gave...
Was that to offset the Mariner Center cost or is that...
That's the Mariner.
Was that to offset the Mariner Center cost?
Yes.
So, do we know how much the Mariner Center is? No, I, I asked that because I thought maybe it was half because it might have been shared. That's the full amount.
I think so.
I put 1,500 down because it represented a third of the request.
Yeah, I think a third was 15.
I did too. Yeah. Yeah. So... So, according to this, what I'm hearing at this table is we did consider this. And you did, I did a third as well. I think Jim, you did the third. We did the same thing. Yeah. So, they have 1,800. They have 1,800. So, they'll have to come up with, oh, no, not if they get a third from each. We gave them 300 more than...
I think that's one that clearly, in my view, is a third, third, third.
Oh, definitely. But we can't tell the others, yeah.
No, we can't tell them what to do, but...
But, but we can always, and we've done that, I think, at the table. We encouraged, we encouraged them to go to the other two. So, so I think what's important, at this point, we let them know what our number is. And then maybe let them know to go those other two steps for the other two thirds. Yeah, exactly.
A little dangerous believing, you can talk to them.
Yeah. Okay, so, anything else on this list that anybody's concerned with?
Well, just, there was one other one, I missed, was the Highland Gun Club, remember Don Trumoff from...
Yeah.
Came in and I wanted to do that, so I put them down there.
Yeah.
Same as the others did there on the thousand.
Yeah, I think we did that, yeah.
That's it.
Okay.
I had, I had intended to do it from the outset.
Okay. So, you made, you made a change then. And you, you've got it, Linda. Okay, good. Anybody else? Good till? Don, you good with... Jim? Wade, you all right?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Okay, I'm good, I guess. Recommend to council to approve the grant allocations. Moved and seconded. Any more discussion, anyone? Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary, motion carried. Thank you, folks. Okay, Jerry, you're on.
Okay, so you have before you a binder with some, some good information and lots of numbers, I'll put it that way. So, what I did, we went back and made some changes, not significant, and they kind of balanced out. We got some more information from the province on what some actual numbers are for education and those types of things. So, all those things have been updated as well. Where we sit today is a deficit of $151,000. So, we're still looking for $151,000 of changes to our budget, whether we have more revenue or fewer expenses. Either way, they need to add up to another $151,000, $152,000. So, in the binder, if you just open up the first page, it's kind of a high-level summary of things that are in that I think are important and significant. So, just, I call it some budget notes. So, just, so you know where we're coming from. Assessments overall were flat for the year. When we do the calculation of our tax revenues, we ended up with $12,000 of tax reven, an increase in tax revenue over the prior year. So, basically, a flat assessment using the same tax rate. We also continue to fund depreciation. We got $1.9 million for transfer to capital. It's a $75,000 increase from the prior year. And we'll have our debt repayments and interest of $317,000, which is down a little bit just because the interest is down. We've got no new debt for capital projects at this point. Unless something big happens, we shouldn't need to. Number three, wind turbine revenue, that's new. We had... Yep. We have... $266,000 is principal and $51,000 is interest.
I'm pretty sure you're right. Pretty sure you're right. All right.
Okay, so, yeah, just stop me anytime you have questions. Number three, wind turbine revenue, we've increased that by 5,000 up to $40,000 for the coming year. Last year, we ended up with our budget of 35, but it wasn't for the full year. So, we expect, expect the wind to hold up for us down this end of the province. Included in our budget, we do have a communications position.
What's that number?
Do we say that here or is that a...
You don't have to.
We've, we've thrown or put $75,000 into the budget for that. So, that would be salary benefits, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
We've also had a vacant compost position, which we didn't fill last year. We tried to run the plant with one less operator, but appears we need to fill that. So, we've put that and budgeted that position to be filled in this, this budget. Just to note... It's, we, we use, or I use 25%. 65-ish, yeah. 65, 70. Yep. Okay.
Good.
Number six, just to note that the lease for the... Thereabouts. So, the lease for the ferry and CBSA has been renewed and renegotiated. So, just to note that it does help us a bit in that the numbers don't change a lot as far as the rent lease payments go, but some of our expenses are now, they're responsible for them. Where in the prior contract, we paid for them. So, helps a bit.
So, we're not, I guess my question I wrote down was, we're not getting more. It's just that they're taking on more, sort of. It all washes out, okay?
Yeah, and it, I mean, it really depends on ridership, basically.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
High school expenses are in there, but I did not budget us through the winter owning it. So, hopefully, by the end of the summer, hopefully, that'll be in private hands and not the town's hands. So, I did not budget heat, for example, for that building, which is the biggest expense.
Yeah.
So, trying to figure out where we can do. Transit, there's a net cost of transit still in our budget and, of course, we all support that. But it's up to about 120,000 this year. Parks is requested and we have 20,000 included to replace or reshingle the roof of the Killam Building on the waterfront. We've got the waterfront funding. They requested 90, but we have it in at 60, which is the same as last year's funding. Recreation, they had a small increase request, but we need to, we're trying to hold the funding in our budget at last year's level of 311,000.
Jer, what about, what about the capital project for the improvements to the boathouse, which I'd like to see done? I know the boathouse is being used all through the week now. You go by there almost any night.
Lake Malo boat?
Lake Malo, yeah. And I'd like to see if we could put that back in. I know Jeff said, I think myself and Jeff had a conversation one time about boat capital for leisure services. But I'd like to see, I know there's opportunities now to get some funding for accessibility and some other things. I know Frank wanted to be able to have some disabled people be able to get to the top floor. I know some of the bathrooms are in dire need of some work and it's used extensively in the summertime. So, I'd like to see if we could put something back in there for the capital for the project at the boathouse.
Well, again, I guess it depends on what we're looking to do, whether it's a renovation or capital. It will affect this budget or be a capital request. But, yeah, I don't know what the plan is or if there is a plan to do things there.
I know they have...
I've not, I've not been given a number to say, can we fit this in our budget, put it that way.
Frank had some numbers in the budget that, or the budget that...
In his leisure services budget?
Yeah. That he passed in. I think Don, he was at the last meeting. Wade, were you?
I wasn't there.
So, if you could have, if we could have a look at that, please. Maybe talk to Frank and just see what that part is and just...
No, I have his budget. I can look it up here a little bit.
Okay. Go ahead, Jeff.
So, I'm, I'm guessing, I think I'm going from, from memory or expectation perhaps even, not even memory. But what we did last year with, with Frank is, in recreation, is we said, look, that's your request. And the number that was agreed to by council, I believe, was 25,000 below what his request was. And so, they made the decision internally that what they would do is spend no money on capital and maintain...
The operations.
That was their decision, right? They come and they ask for a number, including capital and operating. They made the decision not to do capital. This year, the recommendation is the same number. If they made the same decision, then there would be no capital, right? If, if Frank came with the idea that he could, would get 50,000 between the two units and spend that at Milo. And again, I, I don't remember seeing the document, but if that's what he did, then what's being recommended here is that you hold the line on how much you give them. But you allow them with the $625,000 they have to decide, is this going into operations, programs, whatever? Or is it going into capital?
Go ahead, Cliff.
Well, to pick up on the deputy mayor's comment about open Malo and accessibility, you've got an item later on and we've just had the big thing, the province, there's a strong initiative going forward on that, rightfully so. And I see that we're, Tom would spend a 25 grand on a plan later on here in the budget. So, maybe Jeff will speak to that when we come to it, but...
Good.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Jer.
So, item 12, just to note that the YMCA funding is also consistent, what we've done in the last few years, at 55,000. And the Mariner Center funding, of course, includes the operations and the concert funding, so a total of 85.
So, what? A total of...
There's a total of 85. The request, I think, was 70 for operations and then 15 for the concert funding. So, that's all in this number.
Gotcha.
I know we, initially, when that request came through, Jeff and I thought it was just basically a guarantee. We didn't realize or think that, you know, 10 of it was going to be spent if they got a concert for sure to buy chairs or whatever. So, we had kind of said, well, if, if something happens, we'll figure it out later on in the year. But it looks like the full 15 is in our budget now, anyway. Facade program, we have 100,000 in this budget for the facade program again. And there's some economic development initiatives that are in, in, included in this budget. We've got the governance study, an economic impact report. There were some videos, I think, for promotions and that type of thing, or maybe for donations, that kind of stuff. There's also an accessibility plan in there for 25,000 and there's some miscellaneous tasks of five. So, those are all within, in under economic development.
I have a question that we might not have an answer for. The accessibility plan, there's so much money out there for this accessibility piece. We really need to, I'm going to let you answer that in case I...
Yeah, so we, we didn't, we haven't yet looked at sources of funding. What we know is that the new accessibility act will require every municipality in the province to have a municipal accessibility plan.
Yes.
We don't know what that looks like. And 25,000 is, is throwing a number at the wall saying it's probably in that order of magnitude, whatever it is. But Jerry and I talked about this earlier today and so what I'd suggest, can I get into suggestion? Okay.
You sure can.
What I would suggest is that we not be first, right? So, let's, yeah, everyone has the same year. There will be a date set and from that point, everyone has to have one done within a year. Let's not be first. Let's not be the, the groundbreakers, the ones that figure out what's included. Let's wait till a couple are, are completed, have a look at what's required. You know, we have some very capable staff that can probably do the line share of the work that's required for municipal accessibility study, but we may need some technical expertise. And so, I would suggest that that number could be as low as 5,000 for that technical expertise, for that piece that we don't have the capability of doing. But when it comes to consultation and, and looking at standards and writing a report to council, I think we have every bit of capability there. I'd suggest reducing that to 5,000. And the other piece is if there are funding programs out there, you know, 50 municipalities will be going at them at the same time. But we'd have as good a chance as anybody of attracting money.
So, so I want to add this to that, that we had a little bit of a conversation with the urban mayors. And, and there's 10 of us. And we didn't talk in detail, but we said, you know what? There's no reason that, for example, you know, Bridgewater and Yarmouth and Kentville can't share. It's, it's the same thing, right? It's, it's, it's the expertise to do the groundwork. So, we did a little bit of talking on that to be able to share certain, much like we do with our neighbors here, right? Except with like towns to, you know, and it just, it just cuts the cost because it's all the same work. Everybody doesn't want to pay $20,000 each, but if we put it all together, then, so that's an option as well. Go ahead, Cliff.
So, to your point, I, I was going to, I'd written down template UNSM, but the thought of talking a couple of, to a couple of those other towns that are about our size and maybe even UNSM, if they came up with a template, would be very helpful. I don't know whether it's too late to do that or...
No, it's not too late. And, and I have a meeting on Friday, so...
The other point is, Jeff, does this thing, does this initiative and legislation implicate us to make changes in our zoning bylaw that affects, affects people beyond our jurisdiction? Right now, I understand we have to inventory our places and our places where we have accessibility deficiencies or not and where we might have. I think that's what we have to do. But, but what about, how far does this go? Does it take us into adopting regulations that require at least new developments to, or old, I don't know. Is it going that far?
Yeah, I think right now, the National Building Code has accessibility requirements within it. So, any new construction, and we've seen some situations on Main Street where, you know, some things have changed to, to enable accessibility. So, this may take that a step further, the, the act, but there are provisions with it. I, I don't think to the...
No, there's 50,000.
Yeah, and the other thing is, it's, it's a, it is a long implementation period. It's like a 20-year implementation period. So, there'll be plenty of time to figure out what and how and when to do the pieces. But the plan needs to be in place, the municipal plan needs to be in place within a year of whatever date they, they determine.
I did. Good? Welcome. Good to go, Jerry.
Okay, so just to mention as well that there's been a question that's in the budget, that there's $20,000 for GAS equipment. Typically, under, any capital under 25,000, we, we don't capitalize. Normally, it's with the size of the operation we have, that, that would just be expense. So, it's in this budget as an expense. And best guess for our C and P contract was to increase from last year of $64,000. So, it would be up to $2,149,000 for our C and P costs. So, that's the, those are all things that are in this budget.
Is that based on capacity? Because we don't pay when they're not there.
That's right. No, it's, it's based on, they've had, they had contract negotiations that were settled last year. And just, there's just been, this year will be about 50, $60,000 more than what we had actually budgeted. So, I'm just looking to increase the budget up to where I think it'll end up being again.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we don't.
I just know that at least two were gone and they've just been replaced, okay.
So, so the way, the way Jerry approaches this is we look at the trend, like, so some years, a number of years ago, we might have been on average able to budget even a couple of positions, few positions below full complement because they were having difficulty filling. But, you know, we don't look at individuals, one person coming and one person going. We just look year to year, what's the trend? And so, it looks like they're having better success in, in filling positions when they become vacant.
That, like I say, that and their, their contract was renegotiated and it all came through a year ago or so.
Okay, good. Okay.
On the second page, one thing that I do is we look at...
If you haven't seen one in three months, that's good news.
So, on the second page, I look at our garbage and organics because we do have a separate fee for those. So, we kind of look at what our expenses are and make sure that we're covering our cost of operations. So, it's not, we try not to take any money out of the general tax rate to cover these things. So, when they are, on the organic side, just a quick summary up top, looks like we'd be, including the depreciation costs of the compost facility and equipment out there, we'd be short this year based on the organic tipping fee revenues that we get. So, talked to Jeff again this morning about that. We'll start the process of looking at increasing, potentially increasing the tipping fees out at the plant. It does take a bit of time because there are private haulers and private businesses that, you know, they have contracts based on set rates. So, we'll talk to them and figure out, you know, what the earliest that we could have a potential rate increase at the tipping fees. But also, we have to keep in mind what the rate is for normal garbage and those types of things. So, we'll do that analysis and figure out when the soonest, what the best rate might be and, and when we can do that. But it will really affect, it may not affect this budget, or if it does, it wouldn't be till towards the end of the year, anyway. So, not budgeting or looking at saying increase in that in the, in this current budget. On the garbage side, this is just strictly our dwelling units, the $180 annual fee that we charge, looking at what our collection contract is, the blue bag processing contract, and then the tipping fees that we pay for our hauler when they cross the scales with the town's garbage. Looks like we'd be short about $15,000 this year. That would equate, just off to the side, just a quick rate and said, you know, if we increase the rate by $5, that would give us the $14,000 to cover the garbage. So, I'd be looking at or maybe suggesting that there might be a $5 increase in the garbage rate for that upcoming year. And that would be the $14,000 help to the bottom line.
I was thinking more, myself.
That's council's decision.
I looked at it and I thought, you know what, it needs to be $20, but whatever. I looked at it and I thought, you know what, it needs to be twenty dollars, but whatever.
I did notice in the paper today, uh, it was in the Vanguard, that I think Shelburne passed their budget, and it mentioned that their garbage rate was like two hundred and thirty dollars or something like that. So I was like, hmm, but... We're just looking to cover our costs of operation.
Oh, sorry, Cliff.
So Jerry, the, the expenses for the compost facility are at five sixty-five, five hundred and sixty-five thousand. And basically, as I take it, uh, we're selling compost at nine thousand dollars. How much compost are we selling out of the total that we make?
We haven't really, uh, I guess, hit that market for compost. We've had a few bulk sales, and we've had basically seven or eight thousand dollars in sales the last couple of years.
So what are we doing with the...
We'd use it, um...
What do we do with the compost if we don't sell it all there?
We use it for cover for the construction debris site, that type of stuff. Jeff may know more.
Is there any opportunity to generate income, better, a better rate of income from that compost?
You are not allowed to move that compost off the facility, as we discovered, unless it is sieve tested and meets a Class B standard. And other than that, it stays on the curing pads. So we currently have an engineer, uh, working with Chad on operational improvements that would allow us to, uh, meet the, at least the Class B standard.
So I take it we're not generating any Class A?
We, last, uh, summer, we were able, no. Uh, last summer, though, we, we got lucky. Uh, we had, uh, a pile that was quite dry, we had good wind conditions and the screener on site, and we, uh, screened out, uh, I'm gonna say thousands of tons, maybe a thousand tons, but quite a bit, and we were able to sell that. But the problem is getting, the stuff is, is extremely good at holding water. So getting it dry enough to be able to get a good, a good, uh, screen is, is, is the trick. And so, um, you know, it's been suggested, in fact, it's a requirement of our permit, that we need to have the stuff covered, but the stuff is like a sponge, it soaks up off the ground. A building of some form is probably what it will take.
Anybody use dryers?
Uh, not that I'm aware of. I wouldn't say it doesn't happen, but I'm not aware of anywhere that does.
Is this another one of those ones that, when I ask the question, what's everybody else doing?
No, that's the question you need to ask.
What's everybody else in the province doing?
Okay.
Wasting a good resource like we are forced to do?
I didn't mean you had to say that second part.
So, so, so the Department of Agriculture has paid a consultant to work between the Department of Environment, the producers of compost, and the agricultural industry, because they see, they know the value of the resource, right?
Yeah.
And it's this classification system that is, that is standing between agriculture and the resource. And so they, they were working on, how can we, how can we make this work? You know, what, what is Colchester doing? Colchester just spent millions of dollars on a new compost facility. Uh, their process, which we saw at the UNSM last year, is exactly the process that we've been running for, well, getting close to twenty years. The difference is, is they have an additional building or two at the end of the process, once the stuff is cured, to allow it to fu, to finish cooling, to stay dry, and to get it screened. So this is a fairly new facility, but it is these big, large, cover-all buildings. So that is one of the options our consultant is looking at. Uh, how big would a building have to be, right? And, and is there equipment that we could put in the building that would, uh, reduce labor costs, right? So you gotta, you gotta, you gotta work this stuff. So I, uh, we have a consultant working on it, and what we're looking for is what is the path forward? Because, as you know, we have curing pads that we have delimited the per, the perimeters of, and, uh, once those are full, you know, then we're building another curing pad just to hold more stuff. And we need to move the stuff off as quickly as we produce it. We're just getting, we're getting backlogged, and, uh, drawing us is, is our, is our challenge.
So is this another example of the Canadian Council of Environmental Ministers, Ministers of Environment, who have set guidelines for Canada for all kinds of environmental things, like well inspections and, and compost and, and pumping out your sewer tanks and all that? Is this another example of our province deciding to cherry pick the ones that they want to harass provincial governments and municipal governments over, or is, am I wrong?
No, you're right. In fact, in our operating, I don't know if I'd use the same terminology, but what they've done in our operating permit, right, the permit that allows us to do this, is they've included the Canadian Council of Ministers of Environment Guidelines for Compost as part of our operating permit. So every word of, of those guidelines are, are part of our operating permit.
But, but at the same time, they don't impose the same guidelines which apply to unregulated water systems, like everybody's well outside of the town of Yarmouth, which require that the well water, every individual, test for pathogens or organics every six months, and for metals every three years, and require that their sewage septic be pumped every three years. Folks, if you don't know it, you could be next if they decide on a whim that they're gonna apply the same standards for you as they're applying to us. I've said.
Thank you. Good, Jerry?
We're good with page two, I guess?
Well, now, no, maybe not. So, did you ask us if we want to up that current rate?
I'm pointing out that we should, uh, to cover our costs. And just noting that a five dollar rate would, would generate fourteen, basically fourteen thousand dollars in revenue.
Yeah, me too. Go ahead, Wade.
What's the rate currently?
It's a hundred and eighty dollars per dwelling unit.
Really, one eighty?
Yep, yep.
Well, you're gonna show it as a monthly.
Uh, we, we collect for four or less.
Four or less.
Right, so if someone has a four-unit building, it's a hundred and eighty times four for that building. So it's per household or per whatever, yeah. Yeah. So, but that, that covers your garbage, weekly pickup, whether it's compost or garbage and the recycling, so...
That's like, for my calculation, three dollars and forty-six cents a, a week.
Yeah.
For collection and disposal, three dollars and forty-six cents.
That's, that's too small a dent with sweetened milk.
Oh, sorry, Wade.
No problem. To me, the thing is, I'm fine with the five dollar rate increase as far as it goes, but we're showing a, a deficit of fifteen, seven, forty, and that would give you fourteen grand. It's close, but it's not, you know, close sometimes only counts in horseshoes. Would it be disastrous if we upped it to six or seven to make the fifteen, the fifteen thousand work? I guess I'm not asking you so much as I'm asking everyone else, is that a...
I would go up, I would probably go up twelve, twelve dollars. It's a dollar more a month. Like, it's, it's twenty-five cents a week.
Yeah.
It's not a lot. I know it's still in addition, but we gotta cover our costs. We can't, you know, nobody, I don't think anybody can drive out to the landfill and back for three dollars and fifty cents.
Well, exactly.
I'd like to spend a facial conversation, I'd like to weigh in to weigh in to the question, so, but you might be loving boardings there also.
Okay.
But I was just thinking, you do it minimally here, and, and I was gonna say around...
Sure.
On his, on his segue. Right, he would. Okay.
Third page I threw in, that's just a recap. I think you've seen that graph before from, from Jeff. Uh, but just to point out again that our assessments have been flat since, well, commercial two thousand and ten, it peaked, and it hasn't gone above that number since, since then. And the residential is more like two thousand and twelve or thirteen, uh, so we've had...
So, I love your projection for two thousand and nineteen, but is that's because we already know, right? That's right. Good stuff.
Fourth page, because I get into the assessments here. Uh, what I like to do for my own thought, and this is a good, good thing for, I think, council to see and understand as well, is I had staff look at our assessments from our two thousand and seventeen assessment roll, which comes out in December, and try to explain how we went from our two thousand and seventeen assessment to our two thousand and eighteen taxable assessments. So we're on page four, okay? So if we just focus in on the residential column for a second, we started with our taxable assessment of two hundred and seventy-five million in two thousand and seventeen. During the year, we've had new construction or slash...
No.
You're on page six.
Yeah, you, you're on, I'm on page five.
Four.
I haven't got the right number then.
That's six. Show us the page you want to be on.
I was, I was on this page.
Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry about that.
Okay, Jerry, you're gonna have to keep up. Okay.
Okay, I may have changed the order a bit, because I thought when I went through it, this makes more sense going through. So in, in this, again, I'm just trying to go from our two thousand and seventeen assessment to eighteen, so we understand what's going on with, with our assessments. So with the residential assessment, we started with the two hundred and seventy-five million. Uh, we looked at, we broke out, uh, items that were in a new construction or renovations. So new construction renovations accounted for one point three million dollar, almost a one point four million dollar increase. Then we had, uh, increases and decreases, and it's just, I think it's chopped off maybe on mine, but maybe not on yours. The description of those are house, houses being sold. So when a house sells, you lose your cap. So you'll see increases when properties are sold, if they sell at a higher market value than cap, because the cap now jumps to the higher level. But you'll, we also have houses that are sold below assessment, so they might have been taxed at a certain level, and if they sell it, a lot less than the market brings them down. So we've had gains and losses from houses being sold.
Did you...
Question?
You good, Cliff?
So, we show a hundred and thirty-two million of commercial assessment, taxable, new construction, right?
One point three in new construction.
Right.
Yeah, so the hundred and thirty-two million is our existing stuff.
Is, that was our starting point from the prior year.
So oftentimes, uh, CAO has shared with me that we have other commercial assessments that are non-taxable, and they're roughly equal to what we can tax. So would the number be roughly, roughly, a hundred and thirty million dollars of non-taxable assessments in the town, in the commercial side of it?
That is on another page for you, the summary that we get. But yeah, no, commercial exempt is actually a hundred and eighty-two million right now.
Even worse, okay.
Yeah.
Even worse. Thank you.
So again, if, if we're looking at the, on the residential side, going through it, just looking at, there were a few houses, a couple houses torn down, so that assessment would disappear for us, from us. And there's a small classification change. I think there was one that might have been part residential and part commercial, so it became all residential. Um, so we increased there. So in the end, those things explain or bring us up to two hundred and seventy-six million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in assessment. So the difference from where our two thousand and eighteen assessment is, I'm going that to say that this million and forty-three thousand is from typical or regular market increases. So I didn't buy or sell my house, my market increased a couple thousand dollars, so... So we gained a million dollars on two hundred and seventy-five million from quote-unquote, I guess, market percentage increase. So that market percentage is a point three seven nine, or point three eight percent increase in residential assessments. So again, just to kind of point out that they're flat. And on the commercial side, we did the same analysis, and it looks like overall, we actually had a small point three seven five percent decrease in commercial. So I was going through this, and I was looking at, okay, so the next step, and when I'm looking at residential, I'm looking at total accounts. We have twenty-four hundred residential accounts in the town. Uh, we summarized the changes, so twenty-eight percent have had either a reduction or no increase in their assessments. Another forty-three percent had between zero and a thousand dollar increase in their assessment. And a further seventeen percent had between a thousand and a nineteen hundred dollar increase in their assessment. And the ten percent had more than nineteen hundred dollars. So when you look at that, the top two, so sixty-one percent, or seventy-one percent, I guess, seventy-one percent of your, your houses out there had less than a thousand dollar increase in assessment. A thousand dollar increase in assessment would equate to a sixteen dollar increase in taxes because of our rate.
So, so the ten point eight three percent, for example...
Yep.
Is, is that cap? Is, is that partially cap? You know what I mean, like...
Well, that would, I mean, if, if they just increased by the cap for those houses, um, they would be your more expensive houses, and indeed they are, because I took a quick look at that, um, as well. So those two hundred and sixty houses that fit in that category or properties that fit in that category, the average assessment for those, two hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
Actually, the assessment, they still assess them, but they probably can't have...
Right.
...the session, so the assessment...
Yeah.
They still assess them.
Okay, okay. Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's narrowed that, which it should, my...
Yeah, Jeff, Jeff has said before, we're, we're not affected a lot by the cap, are we?
No, and I think the graph would show you that on the prior page.
There's a graph there, but I had saw a list of, of the financial impact, or the assessment impact, by the cap for each municipality, and we were, we were the, the one municipality that was affected the least, because our housing market has been so, um, stagnant, uh, you know, in terms of the market value. So that we saw in the last couple of years in the assessment chart there, you can see it's starting to come back up. So that's good news, and when you consider there's, there's a one-year lag in the, in the assessment, I think that's, that's encouraging, but, uh, as Jerry's pointed out, the market is still not, uh, certainly not on fire.
And I guess I wanted to do this because I know count... So council's talked about a potential two-cent rate increase or whatever. So I wanted to just do this so you understood that seventy-one percent of the residential units in the town currently have a thousand dollar or less increase in assessment, which is sixteen dollars. A two-cent increase is gonna be another, you know, a few dollars, kind of, it's not gonna be a... It's not like we're gonna say we're taxing everybody by hundreds of dollars more. It's, you're down to the dollar thirty-seven, a dollar forty a month, kind of thing. So, that was just someone else I had staff do to, kind of for my own information, but I thought it was good information for council to have as well.
It's, it's helpful, because you don't, you know, even you, you think like two cents or three cents, and Dawn always, you're always aware of how much, how much more you have to pay, right? But when you say it like that, a dollar forty a month, and, and you go to, you know, it's less than a cup of coffee, and we need it.
And we, we, you know, I've looked, and it's, the, the houses that are not assessed for as much are in your top or bottom two categories, so they've had less than a thousand dollar increase. The, the category zero to a thousand, average assessment's eighty-one... The, the category zero to a thousand, average assessment's eighty-one thousand dollars. You know, the category with more than a nineteen hundred dollar increase, average assessment, two hundred and ten thousand dollars, so. The twenty-eight percent, it doesn't matter what you do with the rate, they're not gonna be affected, because they've, well, they've got zero or smaller reductions in assessment. They would be affected, but to a small extent.
Okay.
From last year's par's bill. So now my numbers are messed up, so my, the next page I have is the tax district summary, and that's, I think, five. Yep. And that's just the summary that we get from PVSC, and that's printed in December, you can see, so it does change a little bit. I mean, between December and now, we've had updates and people's appeals have gone through, and, you know, houses, um, well, appeals are the main thing that have happened since. Uh, so, but those are the numbers that we start with. And as council has mentioned, that we do have a lot of exempt property, now some of that exempt, we, is, um, we do grant and lose for, because of like, you know, the courthouse, so those types of buildings are in there for exempt, but we do get grant and loo.
Yeah, go ahead, I, I think you're gonna ask.
So Jerry, I'm on pa, your page, I guess our page five, too, or, or, I don't know. The, the, I think you just referred to that page, it's the.
Yep, tax district summary.
Which has the schedule, this thing.
Yep.
So, residential exempt, would that be the Nova Scotia Housing Commission?
I think so.
That would be, for that number, it's fifteen million dollars.
Yeah.
So is that, is that the residential, is, likely the housing commission?
Likely, yeah, I could verify for sure, but I think that's what it is.
Send that Vacon woman a letter and tell her just what we do give them.
Well, yeah, and, and the other piece is, because I, I, I thought he was gonna ask a different question. We have the highest per capita of, of affordable, of provincial housing, right? Which we don't get taxes for, but you're saying we get a grant and loo?
We.
There's fifteen million dollars of taxable.
On the residential.
On the residential, which is the housing units.
On the res.
It's gotta be the housing units.
Yeah, that's gotta be the housing, now the grant and loos we get are for, yeah, they do include some of those properties.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is that in here, like, how much do we get back?
Grants and loo, um, they take your tax rate, and then they basically pay about seventy percent of the assessed cost, or something like that.
Well, they do.
I forget the formula.
Well, that's a chunk.
But we get, yeah, I can tell you.
Well, we're still paying thirty percent of it.
Yeah, but thirty percent is a whole lot less than what I thought it was, right?
Same, same for me, so I'll.
I didn't even realize.
We get a hundred and eighty.
We got grants and loo, but not to that degree.
Yeah, we budgeted our federal grant loo of a hundred and eighty-five thousand, and a provincial grant loo of eight hundred and seventy-four. And most of the provincial is the courthouse.
Yeah, half a million bucks, isn't it?
The, the commercial, that's a hundred and eighty-three million dollars. That's.
That's the number we discussed earlier.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, courthouse is just one.
Yeah.
All those provincial buildings, schools? No, churches?
So now that we own the schools.
No.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, but that's still all, it, it's in the commercial exempt. So what he's saying is, we don't get, we don't get, uh, grant loo for hospitals, schools, all those things.
Right.
Right, we, we don't. They're all here.
Let me ask this crazy question.
Man, we do darn well for.
Here's the crazy question, now that we're the owner of the schools, how, how is that handled? They're not educational facilities anymore under the Assessment Act, or are they?
They're not, um, they're just listed as exempt right now, I believe.
Well, they're exempt under the Assessment Act.
Yeah.
But in the Assessment Act, what's exempt are public schools.
Go ahead, Jeff.
They're municipal properties now, right? So if we've sold.
When we own them, we don't tax ourselves.
Right.
They're exempt, ah, under the Assessment Act, they're exempt.
So this, these numbers will change, and they do change over with appeals and that type of thing, so the next page I have is, you'll see some handwriting, I think. At top is clearly interim two thousand eighteen, nineteen, is what we see, so. So that I just, for my own benefit, or my, and for yours, that's what we actually billed, um, this week. Um, so the interim tax bills will be going out, so those are the taxable assessments that are in the system right now. Uh, residential's two seventy-seven nine, and commercial one thirty-three, and then there's some resource property as well. So I just do this quickly myself to make sure that, uh, the budget figure that we have is still current and relevant, so when that's sixty percent, if you did the math to bump that up to a hundred percent, and I always allow for about fifty-five thousand dollars in tax revenue for appeals, because that's been the, the history that I've seen over the last twelve years, so my budget number is still within like three or four hundred dollars of what's here, so the appeals haven't affected us that much at this point.
So, don't laugh at this question, I'm really bad with numbers. So that fifty-five thousand for the appeal allowance, is that, um, because they win their appeals? That's not like court costs and stuff, that's actual income.
That's.
That we don't get, because they've won their appeals.
Basically, by the time we do our final bill, people who have appealed their assessments, their assessments are lower, we just tax less than what we get right now.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So.
All right. You good on that page, guys and girls? Okay.
Uh, you'll see a kind of a Town of Yarmouth tax rates per hundred sheet, that's the next page that I'm looking at. And that's just a summary of what our tax rates have been over the last, well, since the year two thousand up top. But what's interesting is the tax adjustments, and I've just kind of tried, kept track of these over the years for my own benefit. If you look at the residential tax rate, and we back out our sewer rate adjustments, uh, which we reduced because we increased the sewer rates, uh, but over the last twelve years, since two thousand and six, we've had a nine-cent reduction in the tax rate. On the commercial side, since two thousand and six, there's been a net one-cent reduction in the tax rate. If we back out the effective rate because of the business occupancy being eliminated, and also the sewer rates being increased. So I just kind of quickly backed those out and said what we've done, so I guess in the end, you can see in the residential side, two thousand and seven, there was a five-cent reduction. In two thousand and ten, another six-cent reduction, and two thousand, uh, eighteen fiscal year, seventeen eighteen, we had a two-cent increase, so a net of a nine-cent reduction in the last twelve years. And again, if you think back to the graph, our assessments have not changed since two thousand and twelve, so the couple reductions were just before it flattened out on us. So, again, that's just something that I've kept track of over the years, and said, oh, maybe council be interested in seeing this.
It's really interesting. Jerry, thanks for doing it like this. Pretty cool to see it there, it's really nice to see it like that.
The next page, I think, is an email that I received from, um, Greg Sewell. And he, that's just, I got that back just last week, April third, and that was just to say that, basically what I see is the, you know, equalizations continue to be frozen at the fourteen, fifteen amounts. Uh, that's the main issue there, the education rate, they're saying there's no change, although uh, because of the formula, our education costs are up like fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars from last year, so not a lot when you're looking at the education amount, when it's a hundred and seven, eight thousand dollars a month. But, those, and, and, and the next page is actually the attachment to his email, so he tells us and shows you what our uniform assessment is, what we're paying for education corrections. He left, he left a zero by roads, I guess we don't pay for roads. So our municipal grants will be equalization. Numbers are there, so all those numbers are built into our budget at this point.
Oh, go ahead, sorry, wait.
Again, rookie question, that I needed explained. Um, explain to me the equalization payment, seven twenty-seven, nine seventy. What is that exactly? What's it for, I guess is more accurate.
Not a rookie question.
The province takes our, um, our financial statements, we feed them into a provincial system, every municipal unit does. They take your core, uh, services that you have to do, if I'm thinking this through properly, Jeff. They pull all your numbers, your expenses for your core numbers, uh, they look at your assessments and try to figure out what a tax rate should be. And I'm trying to think of, think this through in my head.
Yeah, what they, what they do is, is they take, they take four, uh, expense areas, and they differentiate towns from rurals. So the four expense areas are police, fire, environmental, and some of your transportation costs, so they exclude transit as an example, uh, from the transportation. They take those four categories, and what the goal is, is they're trying to determine, um, they're trying to provide some money so that towns can provide a, a similar level of service to a similar, at a similar cost to your taxpayers, so they take, they kind of use some average, uh, tax rate data, the average assessment data, and these average costs. And at the end of the day, they come up with a number, and then they fund the program somewhere near around fifty percent. So whatever comes out at the end of that formula, the program is only funded about fifty percent, so it's never going to achieve its goal. It is an imperfect formula, it's been in existence for a very long time. Municipalities have different costs, costs have changed since this was, uh, established, and so it's one of the things when we talk about provincial municipal, um, relations and, and equity. Everyone looks at equalization, says it doesn't work, but when you try to propose any kind of solution or change, there are always winners and losers. And when there are winners and losers, there are people who support the change, and there are people who don't. And the one thing the government will say, and has been consistent on, is they will not put more money in the pot, so it's a zero-sum game.
And that's in the email, I think, where they continue to fund it at the fourteen, fifteen amount, so there's a, they set aside a amount of money, and then they run this formula, basically kind of give you a, uh, and then they pay your, pay one of the same percentage of what their need would be, so.
So, speaking of unequal, this is a sidebar, and I shouldn't go there, but I have to, because we have to discuss it sometime. That whole formula for that eight hundred and sixty-eight million that just came out to the province, if you're a town over five thousand, you get to pay thirty-three percent, if you're a town under, you get to pay seven percent. Like, what's that? Unbelievable, so I've got the urban mayors a little bit wound up, because you, you grow, and when you grow, you get penalized. And so, the towns that aren't sustainable, because they haven't done things like, uh, fund their depreciation, or whatever else, well, you only have to pay seven percent of, you know what I mean, I'm like, really? So you do everything right?
I didn't read that.
Well, what you can't fix what isn't, it's not viable, right? Go ahead, Jerry. Oh, we're going the other way, let me tell you. Right? Did they make that up? I'm just wondering. Think that came federally. Okay, sorry, Jerry, I'm a little wound at that. Right, the harder you work to grow and do things right, the more you get penalized. The urban mayors will have a say in it, okay, sorry, go ahead, what? Well, that's what we were just discussing. Okay, which we get, we'll tell you after. Okay, go ahead, Jerry.
So that's, that's it for the front part of all the kind of information sheets that we had. Said the last meeting, our intent was to hopefully come back with, um, some of the changes that we've discussed at the last meeting, come up with, uh, where we are at that point, we're short a hundred and fifty thousand, fifty-two thousand, and come up with a few ideas, now there's a few.
Well, we're just, we just finished, we're right after the first page after that pink.
After that first pink sheet, yeah. So it's the one-page summary of the town's budget, and it shows the current budget first, last year's budget, and last year's actual to date. Now, we're still going through year-end stuff and audits, so that's not where we'll end up. Uh, I know there's one big thing that's not in there yet, is in our CMP bill for the third, fourth quarter, so that bottom line of four fifteen will quickly disappear. But we focus on the budget side, um, we're still looking for a hundred and fifty-one thousand, and our intent was to come to you with a few ideas and suggestions, and basically discussions that we've had. I know council's talked about two cents, um, if that was what you ended up saying you wanted to do. We talked about that being around an eighty thousand dollar change. Uh, we talked about the garbage rate potentially being ten dollars, which is like a twenty-eight thousand dollar change. Uh, the accessibility plan, we cha, we talked about reducing that down to five, which is a twenty thousand dollar change. And that would bring, that's a hundred and twenty-eight of the hundred and fifty-one that we're looking for.
And what about that, uh?
That piece of the equipment I could change.
No, I wasn't thinking that, I was thinking about that accessibility plan thing.
Yeah, I have that in there for twenty.
Oh, sorry, Jerry.
So the rates would be, the rates if you went with a two-cent rate change is, is roughly eighty thousand dollars. That accessibility plan change, that's twenty thousand, that gives you a hundred.
Yeah.
And we talked about the garbage rate change of going from one eighty up to one ninety, so a ten-dollar change would give you twenty-eight thousand dollars more. Those three things goes a hundred and twenty-eight thousand towards the hundred and fifty-one that we're looking for. Uh, there's, I've, I've talked to Chad, I don't want to do things, uh, we've squeezed Chad and Public Works and Parks a lot in the last couple of years.
Yeah, they're.
I'm trying to avoid that.
Down some of that, too, yeah.
And so, I mean, I would, the, my, my first thing after that, I would, I would probably go and just capitalize that GIS piece of equipment, put it, run it through our capital budget for twenty grand, that would bring us up to about a hundred and forty-eight thousand. And then we would just find five thousand more and have a three thousand dollar surplus budgeted. So, you know, my intent wasn't today to go dig through the last report, which is the detail, and it's thirty-eight pages long. It was more of a high level, and I know Jeff and I want to talk to you about a couple of things in camera as well, that could affect the budget as well, so there's a couple of other things that I guess we'll talk about.
Okay.
Jerry, on page, uh, the second page following the first pink page, you're showing, uh, in the twenty, in the column is twenty seventeen slash twenty eighteen actual.
Yep.
You're showing a, a surplus of four, one, five?
Yeah, and that's, that's where we are today, like, we're, we're still finishing up and wrapping up our year-end. And there's a couple of things in there that are not done, uh, the biggest one uh, is on the protective services, like the final, the fourth quarter, our CMP bill's not in yet.
Yeah.
That'll be roughly five hundred thousand dollars, so.
Okay.
Your four hundred thousand will disappear pretty quick.
So.
They build quarterly.
So going, going back to the first page, people, where we had seventeen items on it.
Yep. All those things are in this current budget.
Yeah.
As discussed.
So the YM, number twelve, the YMCA funding held at fifty-five thousand.
Yep.
I'd like to know where the other two units stand, because they, they're contributing.
They contribute fifteen thousand dollars each.
Each, yeah.
Okay, where, where exactly are we?
Jim's just going back to the very first page where we have.
I'm going back to the, I'm just going back to the first page of those, the budget notes. So, but further to that, I want to add to that, Cliff, and you're right. They're, if they're going to stay where they are, they need to find four hundred thousand dollars for a new, a frigging new, a roof, a new roof. And that would happen sooner than later, I guess, so I'm told. And so, I don't mind the budget figure of fifty-five thousand, but I think our two sister units should be very aware of that through the CAOs and the mayor and the two wardens.
I think they are.
Okay.
But, again, to Cliff's point, even if we all gave it the amount we gave, still not enough.
No, but, but they need to be aware of the capital costs of the new roof and the operational line that we, every year. So, I think they should be paying a third of it, at least, each a third, and not just us doing fifty percent or more than fifty percent. A little bit up, yeah.
Okay.
So, our wind turbine revenues, you feel it's going to be, could it be more than forty thousand? Don't know, that's a hard question.
We've only had it for one year, so.
Yeah.
I don't really.
And number seven, you know, we got a note.
High school.
We got a note from Matthew addressed to Jeff, and he may be looking for additional funding to make the project go. He's looking for investors. And here we are, I'm just a little bit concerned, we're only budgeting for five months. I get a feeling that he might struggle with that, unless you people have more information than I do.
No, no.
A million dollars is a million dollars.
Yeah, I know, but it's not for here.
Well, we may have to pay, what if we don't sell the school, is what I'm saying?
Oh, okay.
What if we don't sell the school? Then we have to find an additional thirty or forty thousand dollars to finish out our fiscal year. And recreation, number eleven, I'm all over the board on those numbers, you guys, but I like what Jeff is working on now, and so, they should be, you know, we should be introducing that concept to them, Jeff, and they should be, recreation should get their full budget of three twenty-two.
Six twenty-two.
Three, was it three twenty-two?
Six twenty-two.
No, but, our, okay, six, okay, and they should be paying sixty percent of it.
That doesn't work this year, though.
This year.
That doesn't work.
No.
No.
What do they spend their money on? What do they frigging? But, I just, I just, I struggle, because we are the poorest municipality from a household income point of view, and we are doing the most of the three units with our budget. We're challenging staff, and staff are challenging us, and I want the budget to frigging work with a minimal amount of increase. Sorry, Jeff, I feel strongly about that, and we just can't keep on going like this, and you've intimated that to us. You want me to be quiet at the last joint council meeting? Well, I'm not going to be quiet at the next joint council meeting.
He did.
Said the F word.
Right? Yes, Jeff, you're on.
I'm, I couldn't agree more, Jim, that we need to go look at all of our agreements. I'm going to have more information for you tomorrow night in terms of the list, the amounts, the cost sharing, and where I think, where I think you need to consider taking it. That'll be a discussion tomorrow night, okay? But, very little of that will affect this current year's budget, because any change in those agreements needs to be negotiated. So, I don't expect there to be any significant opportunity this year in that regard.
And I understand.
Yep, okay. Probably about where we are, you know, very close, very close. So, the other one I want to just briefly touch on was the YMCA, because that is one that is, that is perhaps the most skewed, and actually isn't subject to any intermunicipal agreement. Our contribution or our grant has been fifty-five thousand dollars. Each of the other two municipalities have been fifteen thousand dollars each, and we know they support the Y, they've said, they've said as much. The problem we have is that we habitually and independently provide grants at a certain level, and we expect the others to change their behavior without any, necessarily without any intervention from us. And so, if you looked at the eighty-five thousand dollars collectively that's been granted to the YMCA as an operational subsidy from the municipalities, first of all, you should ask yourself, we should ask ourselves, why are we subsidizing the Y to the tune of eighty-five thousand dollars? If you can articulate, and maybe you can articulate a good reason why that is, then fine. And if you can then articulate why the town should pay something in the area of sixty percent of that subsidy, then no problem. But, if you want to change the ratios, then you have to change your behavior, because I don't expect the others to come up and exceed the fifty-five thousand. So, if you want to bring that issue to the fore, you look at the eighty-five thousand, you figure out what twenty-six percent of it is, and that's what you give as a grant. And that will cause some discussion. Otherwise, you give the fifty-five thousand, and I guarantee they'll give the fifteen each.
Go ahead, Jim.
So, related to that, on our, on the second page of our budget grants to organizations, you know, we give out, as Cliff has pointed a couple of times, three hundred and two thousand dollars. We give away three hundred and two thousand dollars. Somehow rather, and we've done that traditionally, and I don't know how you look at that again to share that with some of the other municipal units, because the library, would you put a library in Carlton? There's one there. But, would you put a, would you put, would you put a library in Rennerton, or Tuscat, or Belleville? And who's going to go to the library in those areas?
I know.
You know, I just, I just think that, you know, and you pointed out, and I'm learning and being challenged by it. I think we have to relook, revamp, and we need to look at this as a unit, one whole unit, not just one small unit. Anyway, I'm sorry, your worship.
No, don't apologize, because you're right. You're right, it's just how do we do it?
But, when we're right, other people think that we're looking down on them.
Yeah. That's not, that's, that's not, what other people think of us is really none of our business.
You're tougher than I am, your worship.
I have to be tough, because you know what? You sit at this table and you make the best decisions that you know, and I've said it, if I've said it once in the last year, I've said it a thousand times. It's not up to us to give everybody everything they want. We have to give them what they need, but we can't provide for all the needs of the entire region, which is what we're doing.
Just finish off without.
Sorry. Yeah.
Go ahead, Jim.
Next year, instead of giving out three hundred and two thousand dollars in grants, we should let them know now that we might consider reducing that to ninety percent. And then, the year after that, eighty-five percent.
So, I only give ninety. Actually, I think I gave eighty this year, because I gave ninety for the first couple of years.
I think I gave a hundred and ten percent.
Then I gave, yeah, you give a hundred and ten percent. So, just by virtue of the fact that we've always done it, there's an expectation. So, if we went to ninety percent, for example, if we went to ninety percent, we would have to, I agree, we would have to say to these units, to these businesses or organizations, next year, we can't do a hundred percent. And we shouldn't be doing a hundred percent for the ones that are for the entire region, but we do.
So, our sister units should know that we're thinking about that, too.
Yes.
If it's a consideration of my fellow counselors.
And I, we really have to sit down and have those hard conversations. We just do.
But, I enjoy the fact that Jeff and Jerry challenge me. They don't understand all the ins and outs of everything, but I know enough to know that we need cash flow. There's always unexpected surprises.
Phil, I think you're next.
Thank you, your worship. And Jeff, with the YMCA, there is a value for it being on Main Street for us, right? So, maybe twenty-six might not be the number, it might be more if it's on our Main Street. But, if whatever happens to the project at the Mariner Center, then that changes everything again on the funding formula for that, right?
Say we shell send five grand, that's what it's worth enough.
Yes.
Okay, so, are you good?
Yeah.
You can keep it on, and he can respond, and then you can put your light on.
So, just, okay, let's talk about the YMCA a bit. So, for their thousand members, to generate the eighty-five thousand dollars they receive in municipal subsidy, they would have to increase each member's rate by seven dollars a month.
By seven dollars a month?
Seven dollars a month for each member. And I have mine taken out monthly, right? And so, it's, you don't think about it, it's just one of those things, one of those bills that gets paid, automatic withdrawal. But, point is, is that if they wanted to be self-sufficient, seven dollars a month for each of their paying members would be all that it would take to replace that municipal subsidy, seven dollars a month, eighty-five dollars a year. So, the other part, just to the deputy mayor, concerning the ratio that we would pay in a subsidy in order to keep it downtown, or to have it downtown, to be consistent with our strategy, the counter to that is a question, and that is, why should we pay, why should we subsidize the, our partner municipalities in order to maintain something in our downtown that is consistent with our strategic priority within our boundaries? If we pay more, that is in effect what's happening, is we're subsidizing them in order to have something within our boundaries, be consistent with our strategy. And I don't know, just something about that, that I'm not sure, I'm not sure whether I'd go more than the twenty-six percent.
I'm just picking up on what Jeff had to say there, and just dawned, there's something dawned on me. So, we've been spending quite a bit of time with joint council meetings, and frankly, it hasn't been all bad.
No.
There are, have been some positives, but we've talked a lot about the mixed priorities. I don't think we've talked about trying to pick out these kinds of things as a subset of priorities. I mean, we could identify some of these things that each of the municipal units could honestly agree to are the kinds of things that are capable and should be shared by all three of us as a starting point.
Yeah.
And then, try to get into the decision, to the discussion after that, after we've identified.
Yeah.
We won't get them all, but we could.
We won't, but remember, don't turn your light on. Remember, we asked the question, can we sit down and look at grants to organizations together? And the answer was no.
No, but, but this is a little different. We have strategic priorities.
Yes.
That we've been kind of stuck on here, because each municipal unit has its own, and we had ours, and then there was the group. These are, they're not strategic priorities, they're a different type of priority, what I'm trying to say? These kinds of, even, I mean, throw the lighthouse in, throw the Cadian Village in. These are different than strategic priorities. These are service priorities, shared service priorities, or something like that, some word, wording like that. So, our museum, our library, you know, the list is here, the Lions Club, Knights of Columbus, and, you know, Juniper, I mean, come on. These are, we should be able to get some, a discussion going on this and come to an agreement on these things, I would think, would make some, I'll leave that with, it's just an idea that popped into my head now.
It's a good idea.
From all over Western Nova Scotia, and I know that.
But, you know, I didn't, I didn't name all of them, but you would start with that list, because those are ours. They would add theirs of similar nature on.
That's a first.
There's a couple in the fridge, Jim.
Loot and free in the fridge, they're nasty. Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't care. Well. Okay? So, where, where are we now?
Where do we go, Chair?
Where, what are we doing?
I'm wondering if it's time to go in camera.
Yeah, okay, you shutting all that off? Thank you. Triple check that.